Okay, next up we have Rick Reynolds from Jamesburg.
Rick Reynolds, Jamesburg. The question came up already about adding Jamesburg to you guys. And earlier you had stated that, talking about the prioritizing and reflecting upon your existing work in the district, where would Jamesburg fall into that? And is there a timeline for you guys to get back to them again? We don't get that much information from our school board sometimes, so we're asking you guys. Is there a deadline that you need to know when and if that would come about to you guys?
Yeah, I'd be glad. What they asked us to do was by September 30th, I believe, was just to give them an indication whether or not we were interested in moving forward. That's it. That's the only timeline that we have right now.
Okay.
And we just, I think it was last week that we received the packet of information that they said they were going to send to us. So that, all they need to know is whether or not we're interested at the end of September.
At the end of September.
Correct.
Okay, thank you very much.
Sure. So we have, next up Patricia, is it Florrick? Ms. Patricia, absolutely.
I'm from Jamesburg too. My name's Patricia Florrick, and I'm so glad I'm here tonight since you, Jamesburg, was brought up because there are, I was here back in March. We're very concerned about this because it is such a huge, the whole thing that's going on is very difficult. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. The whole situation is very difficult for the residents of Jamesburg, for the parents of Jamesburg, for the people of Monroe. Our two towns have been linked for a long, long time. And I've said it before, every time I come here and I see your people, you're lovely. It's not, it's-
You're lovely.
You are, no, no, really. You're wonderful, Mr. Sampson. Honestly, you're great. But we are trying to maintain our relationship with Monroe. They've been very good to us over the years. And you're talking about the demographics, and I know you've got a packet, but there's stuff that, I mean, we know, our town is a small town, there's a lot of transient people in it, the parents don't drive. Literally, they moved to Jamesburg because it's a walking community, even the high school is within walking distance. You would have parents that, God forbid, if the kid missed the bus, the kid missed the bus, that's it, they're out of luck. The parents won't be able to come to conferences. There's real, real issues in Jamesburg. We have a very high percentage of IEPs, we're at 18 percent. We have 30 percent reduced lunches. Monroe, out of the kindness of their hearts frankly, knows about our financial straits. And they've actually been, they have actually waived the resource room fee. They give us the rate for all our special needs children, but there are quite a lot of them, they give us those children at the regular tuition rate. They don't charge us more because they know we can't afford it. We are in, we are in debt to Monroe Township by the end of next school year for over a million dollars. And the little deal that they're trying to negotiate is that we're going to be there through, with this freshman class, when they graduate, each year we're going to be further and further in debt. And this whole little scheme or plan of theirs is somehow to take this extra money and start paying back Monroe. But we're already at a financial brink. Our school system, our elementary ed program is barely, barely offering a thorough and efficient education. And we've been told by people that really know about our school that it's not a thorough and efficient education that we are offering any longer. So anyhow, there's a lot to think about. And not only that, like I said, our two communities are linked, and this is very traumatic for everybody involved. You know, I was a Jamesburg kid that went to Monroe High School. Our two towns, we go to church together, we participate in sports together, our kids are in scouts together, our communities are very linked. This is, this is really weird and awkward for us, you know what I mean? I know, and we've been told from the very beginning, right up through the governor's office, "Jamesburg, you're going to Freehold, that's where you're going." And so that, I don't, I don't know where they got that information from, but I can tell you from every authority-
They should probably ask us that first.
I know, I know. I'm just telling you that this is what we've been told. So this is why we know that they applied to 20 schools, blabbity, blabbity, five, five, you're one of the five that have come back and said, "Well, maybe we'll consider you." But we've always been told, "This is where you're going." So this is why we're here. And like I said, it's not that, I'm sure it's a wonderful school district, but we're trying to work this out with Monroe, somehow, to keep the situation going. And it's awkward, it's not easy, but anyhow, and what else did I want? Oh yeah, just say we do end up coming here after all this, wouldn't Manalapan be the home school for Jamesburg?
Not necessarily.
Not necessarily?
Not, not necessarily. We would have to, we have to launch our demographic study. It's not as simple as simply saying, "We think it's an effective deal and let's move forward." There's a lot more involved in it. And, you know, when Mr. Boyce and I left the meeting, as we're walking to our cars, we said, you know, "The only, the only folks who feel really bad for the kids in Jamesburg because this is a financial issue that I think spiraled, there doesn't seem, there seems to be a lot of misinformation that's floated, there seems to be some breakdowns in communication." You know, where that all lands, I don't know. We haven't even embarked upon our demographic study yet that would even tell us if this was feasible or not.
Okay, well now here is the problem. They are bound and determined to get the seventh graders, rising eighth graders, into your school, or whatever school, by the following September. We're talking a year from September. They are determined, this is what they've told us.
Sure.
This is a rush.
That's, that's their issue.
Yeah, well this is what I say too. This is, I mean, granted, maybe we can't afford Monroe, maybe it's out of the question, but this is a big deal that needs to be looked at carefully and not just push, push, get it through, get it through, get the budget ready. Do you know what I'm saying? And we, we hope you just think about this very carefully before you do it because, like I said, our Ja, I love my town, I do, I love Monroe, this is a nice place, but Jamesburg's got a lot of things going on and a lot of issues. We are, we're a donut hole, you know, we're like, we're not even one square mile, we have all the financial problems out of one little town trying to support administration, you know what I mean? So, okay.
It's, it's a great point. You know, our, our major concern first and foremost is our capacity for our kids.
I know.
And then everything else after that.
Right.
So, I mean, it's, it's not on, it's not even on our, I wouldn't even say it's on our horizon at this point in time, other than just an initial listening.
All right. All right, well I just wanted to, just talk. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you, Ms. Patricia. I just want to let you know that we are not, as far as I know, we're not instigating this, you know what I mean?
I know.
It's not coming from us, so. Okay, last but not least, we have, and I have to call this person, Ms. Kathy, because I can't read the last name.
Slohman.
Slohman.
Yes.
Oh, I couldn't tell what that fourth letter was.
Hi, Kathy Slohman from Monroe Township. I'm here with my friends from Jamesburg about the same issue. I wanted to ask, I heard reference to a number of 16,100 in terms of tuition for students who are in the Freehold District, is that correct?
No. No, I mean, we don't even have, all, all that they would have are the numbers that Monroe is potentially charging Jamesburg. We don't have any numbers from, from our end. That's, that's all internal discussion between Monroe and Jamesburg. My understanding was, and again, we have one perspective in one meeting, was that Monroe was choosing to increase the tuition by just short of $6,000 per student, and that was driving the decision. Other than that, I don't have any information on what the, what the finances per student look like. I don't know if, did you get any more?
Within, within Freehold, there's no idea of what the tuition charge would be to Jamesburg?
No, we're not nearly at that point.
No.
And I think the number you're referencing was the, the tuition relationship between Monroe and Jamesburg.
Yes, Jamesburg and Monroe, it's 16,100 per student.
Okay.
An additional 3,000 per student in debt service for the new high school that is opening this September.
Okay.
No, but nothing, okay. Can I ask then, timing wise, if Jamesburg would like an answer from you by September 30th, what is, what is reasonable in terms of your board making an actual decision and drawing up a contract and arrangement with Jamesburg, and then enabling the eighth grade students to prepare or enroll or apply to the academies and all of that that's required? Is, from what I understand, normally your eighth grade population applies to the academies in October of their eighth grade year, for the subsequent ninth grade year, and this process would go extend way beyond that, but I'm not even sure if there, if it's feasible?
I, I cannot reiterate enough that this was an initial conversation and that this has spiraled to the point where we're at, where folks are coming a couple of the board meetings and asking. This was a half an hour conversation with no more due diligence other than the information that we've received at this point in time that we haven't even processed yet. So the immediate hurdle will be the September 30th, where they've asked us to either let them know yea or nay if we're interested in, in moving forward. After that, I couldn't even answer what the process would be because we'd have to look at so much information to even make an informed decision about what our capacity would be. And it's not, in all candor, it's not something that is on anybody's high priority list right now. Our, our priority is the kids that are here, and certainly to hear any, any potential avenues of, of additional revenue to the school district. But in terms of making it, we, we are light years away from that. We are not even, this was an initial conversation, and there's been no subsequent dialogue other than to confirm whether or not we received the packet of information. That's it.
And was your meeting with the superintendent and the board?
Superintendent and the business administrator.
Okay. The business administrator from Jamesburg, you know, is the mayor of Englishtown. Okay, now I'm not sure, maybe that's why there's been a lot of conversation about us attending Freehold.
No, first off, that wouldn't drive anything.
I know.
Secondly-
I'm just saying, people started to read things-
I think folks are, I think the rumor mill is, is a little out of control with this, to tell you the truth. You know, I mean, this was, I, I wish we got as much press for this as all the positive things we do in a school district from this half hour conversation. That's all it was. And, and our plans would, we would make a determination to move forward after we had significant information to bring to the board to even make an informed decision, which we don't currently have.
All right. Thank you so much. The only thing then, if I could conclude, is just so you're aware, they expect, I guess, answers from the five positive schools, or the schools who've responded somewhat favorably September 30th. They've hired a consulting firm and expect a feasibility study to be concluded by October 31 or so. And they're making their school choice and they're going to have their budget ready for February. That's what they're telling us. So that's why we're here, thinking-
We do not run the Jamesburg schools, so we can't, I can't answer for what their timelines are or-
What I'm getting from you, scheduling wise, is very different than the timeline we receive when we go to the Jamesburg board meetings, so.
Ms. Kathy, you have to understand that, that deadline of September 30th, that's their deadline. That's not our deadline. We don't even have to abide by that, you know, I mean, this seems to be driven by them, not us, so I almost feel like you're talking to the wrong board.
Well, we talk to them too, but somebody said we sometimes have a hard time getting the information we need from them, so, you know. But that's all. Thank you so much, everybody.
You're welcome. Okay, next we come to the, oh, I'm sorry. Just give us your name, mister. So we can call you by.
Mr. Sandy from guess where?
Mr. Sandy, okay.
Jamesburg. First, and I did this back in March, and it's important for myself that I do this again, I really need to commend your board. You know, it's interesting watching your shocked faces at the information we're saying, and I want to dispel a rumor, as you've asked so many eloquent questions before, and I want to explain where this rumor came from. I was the first one along with a few of these people at that board meeting when we, when the kids came home crying that they were being moved. And I was speaking to a board member at the time, before the meeting, but he was sitting on a seat. And I said, "What's this about?" He said, "Look Sandy, just so you know, it's already decided." And I said, "What's that?" He goes, "We're leaving. We can't afford Monroe. Most likely we're going to Freehold, they're the ones we spoke with." When I stood up at the meeting and called him on that, he said, "Well, that was a private conversation." I said, "Yeah, but you were at the thing." Long story short, that's the only way to get information from our board. And it started because of himself and Mr. Reynolds, the mayor of Jamesburg, not mayor of Jamesburg, I'm sorry, Englishtown, perpetuated that rumor, and that's all we've been hearing. I can tell you right now, while we are composing ourselves and trying to be very nice, when we leave here tonight, we might do the superintendent dance because it is so nice to hear the honesty of that, "We don't know what you're talking about. We have been told basically that this is a done deal. We plan on being at every school board meeting for every township that wants us because we want to find out what the deal is."
If you're going to continue to compliment me, come to every meeting.
You know what, I don't know if you were at the superintendent at the, at the last meeting, but I have to tell you, it was the same thing. People ask questions, you not only answer them, but you answer them with respect. I won't mention names, but the comment to us after the board meeting we went to is, "I hope your little group does something good, but you're not going to get anywhere." And that was to a board member. So I want to thank you all for not only allowing us to be here and to speak, but the way you answer everybody's questions, you ask some tough questions. You know, you're sitting there, you're taking your notes, it, it's so nice to watch this responsibility, and if we were going to go somewhere, I'm sure this would be a great place because you are lovely. Okay, but we want to say, I just wanted to thank you really. But it was perpetuated by our own board, and we appreciate your forthrightness in telling us that really nothing has happened here.
Thank you, Ms. Sandy.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm a product of the Freehold Township High School. I graduated in 1973, and I have to say, Mr. Sampson, I am so impressed, I came with my mother-in-law because she doesn't know if she has a job, she's a, a bus aide. And I just came with her because I didn't know if that would maybe be on the agenda. And I am just so impressed with Mr. Sampson that I, I thought, oh, I can't get over how wonderful the, and even, I, I, I just, I just, I'm so impressed, I can't, I can't tell you anymore. I, I just wish that we had this kind of curriculum when I was in high school. I graduated in 1973, and I, I really enjoyed Freehold Township High School, but my, my question is, and the reason why we're here, my mother-in-law is, is an employee for 23 years as a bus aide. And, you know, the trans, that's a very important job, even though it may not be significant to some people. They help children who really cannot help themselves, and the children know them, and she loves her job. And she really didn't know, she didn't, she didn't hear anything about her employment. And so, you know, we're just here to find out in general, where do the bus aides stand as far as transportation is concerned? But I am very impressed with, 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 with all of you, and again, Mr. Sampson, I, I wish you well, and I, I'm just, I'm just so impressed. I'm, I'm a resident of Howell, New Jersey, so I'm very happy to be, my tax dollars are going to such a distinguished group of people, really. And another thing I just wanted to say about tax dollars, we cannot pay a good teacher enough because our children are our future. And we need, we need good engineers, we need, we need people in the financial world. We can't depend on the Chinese to run our country. We have to run it. So we can't invest enough in our children. So I just want to thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Barbara. And I think we have an answer for you, for your question.
As far as the transportation aids, we, we looked at, folks received notice in April and May that their jobs may cease on June 30th. We looked at other alternatives. We met earlier this week, and I brought it to the board tonight in person, but via email, that we felt that, given that the contract that these folks were under was negotiated in good faith with the Board of Education once upon a time, and that the contract will be up this year to be renegotiated, that the most prudent thing to do, and, and in all candor, the human thing to do, as that money was, was budgeted, would be to bring it to the negotiation table, allow it to continue as it is for a year, knowing that we're going to negotiate and, and keep those folks in district, and then we can work in good faith from, from one side to the other and, and move forward. So that, that was my recommendation.
All right, now we come to the motions. Since H1 through H4 may, or may not be contentious, we're going to take them one at a time, the Hs, just the Hs. Yes, so we have some, that's H2, right? Yeah, there are Hs.
Before we do H2.
Okay, yes, so let us do H1 first, okay? So we have H1, do we have a motion for H1?
Motion.
Motion second.
Second.
We have a tie for second? Okay, Jen and Ron. Discussion, H1? No discussion seen, no discussion?
I wish Jason good luck.
Is that under H1?
Yes.
Is it H1?
Yes.
All right, under H1, Ms. Lavin has something to say to Mr. Jason.
Pay attention, no. I wish you the best, I really do. I'm sorry to see you leave, but everyone has to go where they feel like they should be, and I wish you the best and good luck in the future. Thank you for your service.
And Jason, I would just like to say, good luck, and I hope they call you by your right last name. Okay, no problem, no problem. Okay, so for H1, Mr. Boyce?
Mr. Acetola? Yes. Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mrs. Canario?
Yes.
Mrs. Lavin?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Messinger?
Uh, no, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
There was a continuation, yes.
Okay.
Um, under the reappointments-
We're just doing H1. We're taking them one at a time. Just the Hs, one at a time.
Isn't that part of H1?
No.
Oh, sorry. Never mind.
Okay. Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
Mrs. Sutera?
Yes.
Ms. Mazek?
Yes.
Mr. Moses?
Yes.
All right, before we do H2, our legal representative is asked to make a statement.
Yeah, you, when H2 is voted on, you will hear two board members, Mr. Bruno and Mr. Lawson, indicate with respect to certain of the items, and I'll, I'll tell you which ones they are. For Mr. Bruno, for, even though there's no action, the names of the assistant superintendents appear on the agenda. So for Mr. Bruno, for Ms. Evangelista and Dr. Kegler, as well as for Jeffrey Moore and Joseph Robinson, he will be taking, he will be voting present, not voting. And for Mr. Lawson, similarly, he will not be voting with respect to Mr. Boyce, Dr. Kegler, James Burns, or Patrick LaGrevenus. The reason for this is, and he, he again will be pre, indicating present, not voting, the reason for this is that from the very beginning of the discussion with respect to these individuals, we've given Mr. Bruno and Mr. Lawson the most conservative possible advice with respect to any conflicts that might arise from their spouses' employment by the district, and the most conservative approach was that they should take no role with respect to the debate or vote concerning the people I've just named, and in fact, that has been the case. They have taken no role, they have excused themselves from closed session when those individuals were discussed, and they have abided in every respect by the advice they were given, and that will be carried through this evening. So that, that will be the reason for their indication on those individuals.
Okay, and also, board members, we have the addendums for H2 on your yellow sheets. One on each page, appointments and reappointments. Yeah, just, well, I'll say it after the, after the- Okay, so we have H2, we have a motion for H2?
Motion.
Mary Ann, motion?
Second.
Second, Kathy? Discussion?
Yeah. Let me explain why I'm going to vote the way I'm going to vote on this issue. This is from June 8th, from the Wall Street Journal, but I really could have done this any single day. There was an article about Target, everyone knows Target, the great retailer. I saw on one page of the newspaper how things are tough for Target's customers, the company itself is struggling to get back to the same level of sales that they had before the recession. Then a couple of pages after that, there was an article about Pfizer looking for a billion dollars in extra yearly cost cuts, which basically comes down to laying people off. And then there was an article about Morgan Stanley, and we know how much money Wall Street makes, but even things seem to be so bad there, they're, in addition to laying off people, they're tracking your BlackBerry usage. So the fact of the matter is, with these types of things going on, it just illustrates the structural unemployment rate being almost 20 percent in the country, and therefore, if we look at somebody who has, has job security, has a good job, has really good benefits, that, and your salary stays the same, that's like getting a raise these days compared to a lot of people in the private sector. And so therefore, you know, I feel that the people on page number eight to be reappointed at this point in time should have the same salary for two straight years. And I do want to say, this is all in the context basically of fully comprehending that there's different echelons of society, and believe me, I mean, up there with the military and policemen and firemen are the people who teach our kids, and the support staff that they do have. So I mean, this is, you know, considering these people in the upper echelon, as I, you know, as I make my decision.
Just one point of clarification is that they have had the same salary for two straight years, it would be the third year. That's, I think it is an important distinction.
Any other discussion?
Well, if I could, Heshy, I, I just want to echo what Mike says and add one more thing. I truly respect the teachers so much, and the reason that I support no raises at this point for anyone is the fact that I don't want to see anybody be affected by a reduction in force. It's a terrible thing when a pink slip is issued. And one of the worst things that I watched was one time, a teacher came to my own house, and he was a young gentleman who was a stellar individual, a wonderful person, and he was worried about his job the next year. I think it's a lot better, and this is my decision, thinking, that money is saved as far as raises go, if it could save the, the level of the teaching staff. So that's my logic behind all my decisions regarding this issue.
Any other discussion? Yes, Kathy?
I just have a comment. With Jason retiring, that money is going, are we replacing that position? I thought we were kind of changing that format. Are we actually replacing it? Are we having-
With, with an assistant business administrator and the district decides, we would absolutely look to replace that position.
That exact position?
As assistant BA, correct.
Okay, okay.
Okay, any other discussion?
Well, I feel, although, in a lot of issues, I agree with some of my colleagues here, I know that my position is going to be unpopular with the public, but I never could understand the reasoning behind why, because airplane pilots didn't get a raise, therefore teachers shouldn't get a raise, or administrators. 2 percent, I don't think is the kind of money that, I can understand some people being upset about being out of work, but I don't remember anyone feeling bad for me when I was on food stamps and I taught in 1970 for $6,800, while all my friends who were in business making $28,000, $30,000 were laughing at me. So I, I am not in the same frame of reference as some of these people, although I am retired and I do live on a set income, I, I don't begrudge people getting their, their due. So that's my statement, and I'm sure if Freehold doesn't like it, they'll vote me out.
Okay, we'll take a vote then, Mr. Boyce?
Mr. Acetola?
Regarding item H2, I approve, with one exception, the entire resolution-
Regarding item H2, I approve, with one exception, the entire resolution, including all reappointments. That exception is I do not vote to approve any compensation increases associated with those reappointments.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes to everything except page 8, as previously stated, on present, but taking up those previously mentioned names.
Mrs. Canario?
Yes to everything.
Mrs. Lavin?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Present, but taking no action on Mr. Boyce, Dr. Kegler, Mr. Burns, and Mr. LaGrevenus, otherwise yes.
Mr. Messinger?
Uh, yes, with the exception of the reappointments on page 8, which I vote no on those.
Mrs. Sutera?
Yes.
Mr. Tmazek?
Yes on everything.
Mr. Moses?
Yes on everything.
Just so the record is clear, at the time of the vote, the names that Mr. Bruno was referring to, that I had mentioned in the introductory remark, were Ms. Evangelista, Dr. Kegler, Jeffrey Moore, and Joseph Robinson.
Just a clarification, you're saying reappointments, they're being reappointed, but you're not agreeing with the increase. Right? I just want to make sure.
Just a point of clarification, they were reappointed at an earlier meeting, this is to set salary.
Okay.
Okay, I think we can do H3 and H4 together. H3 and H4, we have a motion. Mary Ann, Jen seconded. Any discussion?
Just one quick point. We've approved three new administrators this evening. Stephanie Meckman, who will be the English Supervisor for Freehold Township, Rosalia Minervini, who will be the Special Education Supervisor at Coltsneck High School, and Alana Andreachi, who will be the Assistant Principal of Marlborough High School. And I can tell you that all three of them came through a very extensive process. I was incredibly optimistic after speaking with all three of them, because they represent young leadership that's moving through the ranks, that I think will make a day-to-day difference in the school district. Alana has embraced the, sort of, the changing role of the Assistant Principal. I do see our Assistant Principals assuming more instructional duty. She's a mathematics background. You know, some folks may question, you know, why do we need two Assistant Principals, three Assistant Principals? At the end of the day, they're responsible for anywhere between 500 and 800 students per individual in the school district. They do all the discipline attendance and all the accompanying parent management that goes with that. They oversee certain departments where they do the evaluations and observations. They're responsible for all of the safety drills in the district. And we are, as a school district this size, well within the state recommendations from a financial perspective and from how do you do it in an effective manner perspective. And I think that we have a terrific team. I'd just like to welcome all three of you aboard.
He's here.
I enjoyed, yeah, please stand up. And I know that I threatened all three of you in the interview process, that, you know, as we move forward, you know, it's new for me here as well. I take it to heart with the leadership team that comes aboard, that, you know, you're a direct reflection of me, and so your success is my success, and I wish you all the best in the district, so thank you. Congratulations. I'd also like to make a comment, I don't know if I'm breaking protocol here, but I'm really big on changing some of the things that have happened in this district that I did not enjoy and are changing, and I wanted to let everyone know that whoever applied for a job, a new regime has started, and therefore, if you didn't get a job, you at least got a letter thanking you for applying for the job and explaining... They will get a letter after tonight. Oh, they will get a letter, I'm sorry. Well, I'm gonna hold you to that then. Okay, so we have a vote on H3 and H4?
Mr. Acetola?
Yes, and I just want to add that Stephanie Meckman, I happen to know, climbed snowbanks to make sure the teachers are, that students are coached properly. Thank you.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mrs. Canario?
Yes.
Mrs. Lavin?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
Mrs. Sutera?
Yes.
Mr. Tmazek?
Yes.
Mr. Moses?
Yes.
All right, next we have I1 through I7. We have a motion. Mary Ann with the motion. Second.
Second.
Seconded. Discussion? All right, vote, Mr. Boyce. Oh, Ron.
I7, the Food Services Contract, just reading the second paragraph that starts off, "The result of dividing the total of gross sales," that sentence doesn't make any sense. It's either not started right, or it's not finished right. It just kind of hangs out there.
This is taken right from standard language, approved by the state, and... That was our first mistake. Yeah, well, it's no choice.
That doesn't impress me.
Actually, you don't have a choice.
It's a fragment, whatever. It's not a sentence.
Think about where it's coming from.
I mean, I'm concerned with what it's saying, because I can't figure out what it's saying.
It's the calculation for the, it's the basis of what their percentage will be. I can certainly sit with you afterwards, Mr. Lawson. I don't have the documents with me.
I mean, I'm not saying to, you know, to hold the resolution or anything, just that once, once we can clear that up, just so that we, you know, we can determine what exactly is being calculated there. I mean, it's probably been there through the first contract, so I guess it hasn't hurt us, but...
What it's doing is it's referencing several sources of sales.
Right.
And it's bringing them all onto the same basis, because the way they're compensated is as a flat amount per pattern meal.
Right.
So what they do is they take everything, whether it's à la carte, actual meals, and they translate everything into what a meal equivalent is.
Select calculating FTE.
And then, right, and then they apply that percentage to it. So that's why you see a lot of different things in here, snack bar, catering, vendor and conference foods, and all that. So you take the results of the dividing, gross sales, plus all of those other things, okay, by $1, and that equals the total meal equivalents.
Right. It's just that it doesn't say that. It gives you the calculation, but it doesn't say what...
Each of this is a component of their, of their management fee.
The result is... Okay, so this is the calculation of the management fee?
Correct.
Okay, then if we just put in front of this, because it doesn't say that, the management fee is calculated by the result of, you know what I mean?
Oh, I think it's just because it's continued from resolve to prove a second renewal of management contract. It's taken, it's at semicolons, that follows that, that initial sentence, no?
I'm sorry.
Doesn't it follow the initial sentence of I7? It's a continuation of the first sentence.
Okay. Well, the board can bring the kids to school. It's dangerous, I can't change it. So, board can vote for it, depending on how they feel. Okay? Yeah. All right, I1 through I7, Mr. Boyce?
Mr. Acetola?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mrs. Canario?
Yes.
Mrs. Canario?
Yes.
Mrs. Lavin?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
Mrs. Sutera?
Yes.
Mr. Tmazek?
Yes.
Mr. Moses?
Yes.
Okay, J1. Mary Ann?
Second.
Jen seconded. Discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Boyce?
Mr. Acetola?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mrs. Canario?
Yes.
Mrs. Lavin?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
Mrs. Sutera?
Yes.
Mr. Tmazek?
Yes.
Mr. Moses?
Yes.
L1 through L11.
Second.
Second. Oh, Mary Ann. Mary Ann's right. Mary is one, yeah. Jen two. Yeah. Discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to thank Dr. Hazel for all the effort she put into the bullying policy. It's an important one.
I want to make sure that Dr. Hazel did not bully you to say that.
Did I do that?
No, she didn't.
Okay, good.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
On that bullying policy, and I think Dr. Hazel did an excellent job with it, this is first reading, we've gone through it, and we'll have some very minor suggestions for changes between now and second reading, the most important of which is at page 41, that after the report of the annual reevaluation and reassessment, there needs to be a provision that the board will then make necessary revisions to the policy, if there are any, based on that evaluation.
Okay, and I just have a quick statement about L11, that a conversation, a private conversation between Mr. Boyce and myself took place, and that a change will be made on a date of a board meeting. We'll take a little, I need to talk to Mr. Sampson. Mr. Sampson.
Yeah, you know, what happened was, we, Mr. Boyce and I, it was brought to our attention by a number of folks when we scheduled a board meeting for Halloween, as we have nine children between us, that we should have realized that having a board meeting on Halloween was a poor idea, and it wasn't our wives, it was a number of folks who have family, grandchildren, children, you know, as part of the group. So we sought for the 24th as a change. We'll have to revisit that month as a whole, knowing that that's, that might be an anomaly, where we only meet once, because we're all going to be at school boards.
Right.
Which is, you know, a multi-day commitment, as it is.
Okay. All right then, L1 through L11.
Oh, Mr. President?
Yes.
I have issues with L9, I don't like it at all, because basically now, the way it is, with all this athletic segregation that starts when kids are five years old, and all this specialization, I don't believe that anybody should be excused for phys ed, no matter what they're doing. If they're the world, if they're a world-class gymnast, I still think they should be in phys ed class with theoretically the worst gymnast in the world, if they go to the same school. And I think having everyone in phys ed together, no matter what the athletic ability, brings more cohesion. I know it doesn't impact that many kids, and some kids want to go to gym class, I just don't see a rationale for excusing anybody from phys ed class, no matter what they're doing in extracurricular activities.
Okay, anyone else?
Michael, I respectfully disagree, because I coached for over 30-some years, and I used to get very upset with my players. They were, believe me when I tell you that they were, they were match fit, if they played for me, and I used, I used to cringe that they would have gym class on the day of a game, or that they would have to actually participate in gym after I would kill them from 2:30 to 5:30. I understand your point, I just want you to know that sometimes, sometimes during the season of a varsity athlete particularly, I just don't see the value of it. I can see the negatives of it, but not the value of it.
Any other discussion? I see we have a athletic director who's staying quiet down there. Okay. That's okay, that's okay.
I will, I will comment. Our district, the district I'm an athletic director in, we do have the students participate in health and phys ed, they're not waived out. However, as an ex-coach, Heshi, and as an athletic director, I do have my concerns about some of the athletes, like you were saying, who could be injured in gym class, or, as you said, ready fitness for a competition that afternoon or that night. So I do have mixed emotions either way with it, to be quite frank.
Thank you for your input, Bill. Mr. Bill, I'm sorry.
Mr. (inaudible).
Okay, here we go. L1 through L11. We already have the motion. We already have the motion? Motion, right. Any other discussion? So here we go. Mr. Boyce?
Mr. Acetola?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mrs. Canario?
Yes.
Mrs. Lavin?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Messinger?
I vote yes for all except for L9, I'm voting no on that.
Mrs. Sutera?
Yes.
Mr. Tmazek?
Yes.
Mr. Moses?
Yes.
And I believe that takes us to the end of our merry meeting. Old business, new business. New business.
But, I had a parent of a student at Freehold Township High School, one of, they had a bunch of issues, but one of them had to do with My Access, and the impression they give off is that in English, you write essays, and the teachers are so busy, they don't have the time to read everything, so My Access takes over and gives a grade for the kid, and it negatively impacts the chart, the student rather, if the My Access Automated Program doesn't like the way they wrote. So, could you basically explain why what this parent's impression is, is not the reality of the situation?
Yeah, I think that it's, it's one of those issues where you have a tool to assist students, and that tool is mistakenly viewed as replacing the teacher. All My Access is, and was piloted this year at Township, and I talked to Liz Higley about it, I talked to Donna Evangelista about it, it is a supplemental writing program for which most students had a tremendous experience with, because what it does is it's used as a tool, it doesn't replace the assignments that are given in the context of a class, nor does it replace what the teacher is grading. But what it does is, if we have a, an essay that's assigned in a particular class, it allows me to funnel rough drafts through that, where it gives me grammatical corrections, things like that, points of emphasis on my writing to then build upon before I submit that final draft to the teacher, who's still ultimately responsible to grade that assessment, not the, I think the last thing we're doing is turning over our students to some automated program to make the determination. So, it is a supplemental tool that we piloted to a great degree of success, and the feedback as a whole from students and from parents was very positive, and from the teachers, that it improved the student writing at Township, and it's something that we wanted to grow throughout the district, because it was positively received. And am I missing anything, Ms. Evangelista, if there's something?
No, I just, maybe I should just add that it does provide timely, data-driven decisions to differentiate the instruction. One of the teachers that I spoke to mentioned how the data in the system, as Mr. Sampson said, grammatical convention errors, that teacher would then structure the lesson that week on grammar, based on the data in the system. So it was a very good teaching tool also.
And I think that tools like that, as we move forward, and we seek to leverage technology a little bit, that allows a teacher to make a more informed decision. So, I float that rough draft essay to 25 students in my class, and then I look at the trends of the class, and what I find are that, you know, nine of those kids have common areas of, that need to be refined, so I target my instruction to those particular nine. So I think it's a powerful tool, and I think that what probably happens, as most of these things go, is student X went home and said, hey, Mom, this computer's grading me, and then, you know, Mom or Dad says, hey, what is this program? And that's typically how these things go. But overall, it was, it was very well received, I do think it's a positive tool moving forward.
Okay, thank you.
Is that a computer program?
It is. Software, yep.
Yeah, I have, we have one in my school, so it's some of the younger children, and I think it's a great asset to them. It shows them what they're doing wrong, and it gives you what you need to teach for each class, so they can better, they can improve their writing skills.
Okay, any other? New business? Seeing none? Oh, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to. We need a motion to adjourn. There we go. All in favor?
Aye.